Welcome, March 14th, 2019, Prescott Valley Regular Council Meeting. Tonight invocation will be by Rabbi Dr. Adele Plotkin, followed by the pledge. Please rise.
Golly gee, you're playing musical chairs and musical people. I'm gonna have to get reoriented. Okay. Honorable Mayor Palguta, council members and staff, community members and friends. Water, 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 not to mention snow, definitely on our minds as you leaders try to find the balance between enough water for community needs and getting rid of excess runoff with adequate easements and culverts. It is clear that you take seriously the tasks of town infrastructure maintenance. By these and similar actions, we pray that you will be able to lead the town to keeping safe and not underwater. May you be blessed with wisdom, a clear view of needed goals, and fortitude to carry through those goals in order to help this town cherish and preserve all that gives us beauty, dignity, and purpose. May you have the strength to cooperatively make hard choices when needed so that you and the community can help its people and its environment to be well provided for while finding the best path for the allocation of resources. These heartfelt prayers we now affirm, each in our own way as we say, "So may it be."
Thank you ma'am. You'd like to start us with the pledge? Start us off for the pledge.
............................................................
Thank you Rabbi. Deputy Town Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rick Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Marty Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mary Mallory.
I'm here.
Councilmember Kendall Schumacher.
Here.
Councilmember Don Packard.
Present.
Vice Mayor Laura Linai.
Glad to be here.
Mayor Kel Palguda.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you ma'am. Normally we'd have number five scheduled announcements and presentations from the chamber, but they've rescheduled. So we're gonna move right into item number six already, with council comments and communications. Anything?
I don't have any.
No?
I'm good to go.
Councilman Grossman, you usually have something.
I know, I just, yeah, there's a few things. I mean, we have a, yeah, the Police Foundation has their golf tournament coming up in April, I believe April 28th. Anyway, it's on the Facebook page and it should be also in the, on the town page for the tournament and right now, that's the only thing I could think of off the top of my head. I just, it's been one of those weeks.
Sounds good.
But wait, I just want to add one other thing. This morning I was at the, yeah, there's always something. I'm sorry Kel. Yeah, this morning I was at the Wildland Fire, they had the open house and I was able to at least thank all the guys there that were there for training. This year they had a class of 887 people training in different aspects of Wildland Fire management and protection and by the time, tomorrow's the last day, so by the time today comes along, there's like 150 in the place and you know, they're just finalizing their certificates, but it's great that we have it right here over at Embry-Riddle and we need them. I mean, we've been, we've had a couple of Wildland Fires, so it's always nice to be able to thank them and let them know that we appreciate what they do.
No, absolutely. Anyone else? All right, moving on to number seven, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. Item A, approving the February 26, 2019 Special Council Minutes and Executive Session Minutes and the February 28, 2019 Regular Council Minutes. Item B, Accounts Payable. Item C, Approving the Reversionary Plot RP-19-002, Dorn Homes, Amending the Contract Scope of Services in the Amount of $38,821 with Southwest Groundwater Consultants. Item E, Accepting the Covenants and Easements for the Sunset Lane Improvement Project, CIP Number S387, APN 103-06-009C, Darty, and APN 103-06-013, Camp and Spear. And finally, Item F, Approving a Special Event Liquor License for the Prescott Valley Performing Arts 2019 Annual Barbecue Dance and Silent Auction located at 3235 North Main Street. Clyde Neville is the applicant. Any council member wish to remove an item?
No, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda by electronic vote.
Do we have a second?
I would second.
Deputy Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Linai?
Yes.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thanks ma'am. Moving on to item number eight, New Business for Review, Comment, and/or Possible Action. Item A, Consideration of Reading Ordinance Number 860, Once by Title Only as an Emergency Measure, and to Sign Any Agreement Under Proposition 207, then Place the Same on Final Passage Approving ANX 19-001 for TDAH Investment LLC. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. You first considered this during a public hearing in February and then moved it forward. We've got the requisite petitions signed by the property owners and other affected property owners and this illustrates the location of the property. Key to this request is there's longstanding policy in the town of Prescott Valley that if you want to use municipal services such as sewer, you have to be annexed to the town of Prescott Valley. This slide illustrates the location of sewer as it relates to the property and you can see it's very near the property corner. The owner of the property through which the sewer line traverses is the same owner that has acquired the church property and they have requested that you annex him so they can receive municipal services. I'd respond to any questions, Mayor, that you may have or inform you that the applicant is in the audience if you'd like him to make a presentation as well.
I do not have any questions. Any comments from council?
No.
Can I get a motion to read the ordinance? It's not open for public discussion at this point. You'll have your time at the end of the, at the end. Thank you. Unless there's something, I don't have any questions. If not, we can just go on to reading the motion.
Motion to Read Ordinance Number 860, Once by Title Only as an Emergency Measure and to Sign an Agreement under Proposition 207, Then Place the Same on Final Passage by Electronic Vote.
I'll second.
Deputy Town Clerk, may please call the vote.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you ma'am. Shall this ordinance pass? May I get a second motion?
Would you like me to read the?
Yes, go ahead and read, please.
An Ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a Municipal Corporation of Arizona, Annexing Third to Certain Real Property ANX 19-001, containing approximately 40,085 square feet, lying in Section 28 Township 14 North, Range 1 East of the Gila and Salt River Meridian, Yavapai County, Arizona. Classifying all the annexed property for zoning purposes as RS-7 and R2-2, being consistent with the present Yavapai County zoning classification of RS-7 and R2-2, providing that the official town map and the town zoning map be appropriately amended and that a copy of this ordinance along with a certified annexation map be recorded in the office of the Yavapai County Recorder, and declaring this ordinance to be an emergency measure pursuant to ARS Section 19-142B and 2-05060 of the Prescott Valley Town Code.
Thank you ma'am. Now shall this ordinance pass? Since I should ask for a second?
So have you announced the votes? Sounds like we're good.
Okay, my equipment isn't working.
All right, so who made the motion?
There's no motion.
No motion. Okay, then that passes unanimously.
Thank you ma'am.
All right. Mr. Mayor, Council, if you don't mind, every time we do this, we always explain to the public why we've used an emergency measure process in annexation. The reason for that is to avoid the requirement for two votes. That doesn't stop, however, the application of state law, which says that once you've adopted this ordinance, folks have 30 days to file any kind of an opposition, if they have one, with the Superior Court. So, we've always wanted to make that clear. Generally, annexations are something that property owners are anxious to do and so we go ahead and do that as an emergency in order to avoid having to do it at two separate meetings, but that still leaves anyone who desires their 30-day period under state law.
Thank you sir.
Moving on to item B, Consideration of Authorizing the Mayor to Sign Resolution Number 2086, Approving the 2019 Governor's Office of Highway Safety Buckle Up Arizona Enforcement Grant Contract Number 2019-C10T-021, and Accepting the Grant Award. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. So this is our request to receive $3,000 from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety for seatbelt enforcement. As you know, we seek grants from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety throughout the year for DUI enforcement, speed enforcement. This one is for seatbelt enforcement. There is no match, it's just $3,000 that we can use towards payment of overtime. I'll answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments from staff? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a second?
Can I read the motion? The motion to authorize the mayor or in his absence the vice mayor to sign Resolution Number 2086, approving the 2019 Governor's Office of Highway Safety Buckle Up Arizona Enforcement Grant, Contract Number 2019-C1OT-021, and accepting the grant award.
Deputy Town Clerk, please call the vote.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you ma'am, thank you chief.
Thank you.
Item C, Consideration of Approving Amendment Number Five to the Jacobs Agreement to Authorize Purchase of Equipment Needed to Expedite Equipping of the New Little Pete and Antelope Park Wells.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I know I went over this in quite a bit of detail at the work study last week and if you'd like to see the presentation again, I can do that. If not, basically I'll just summarize, we are amending the contract with Jacobs to purchase equipment associated with the capital project. It's the Little Pete and the Antelope Park wells and we're doing that to expedite the whole process of getting the construction going. And so in front of you is an amendment to the Jacobs contract, not to exceed $600,000, the money for which will come out of our capital project budget. And this is basically following Town Code 3-04-060, which allows you to purchase material directly without going through the normal bidding process.
Great, thank you sir. Any comments or questions? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Amendment Number Five to the Jacobs Agreement to Authorize Purchase of Equipment Needed to Expedite Equipping of the New Little Pete and Antelope Park Wells by electronic vote.
Deputy Town Clerk, please call the vote.
I'll make a second. I'll make a second.
My apologies.
You'll get bored. This is not working right. The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you ma'am, thank you sir. And I guess you're up here for the next one. Item D, Consideration of Approving Award of the Construction Contract to the Lowest Responsive bidder for the Little Pete Well Equipping Project, CIP Number W442A.
Yeah, so this is, kind of goes hand in hand with the previous item. We put out the bid for equipping of the Little Pete well, so this is for the actual work. It's for purchasing the equipment that we didn't do under the emergency purchase and it's for doing the work to actually equip the well. And so on Monday, we received three bids for this project. The low bidder was Paul R. Peterson Construction at a bid price of $738,158. You'll note that the second bidder on this was less than $350 a part, so they had a little bit of heartburn about not winning that, but, so we got some really close bids on this project. And I don't know exactly how much shows up in your RFCA because we did, you got the whole thing? Okay, good, good. Yeah, so we did bid it on Monday, we received those three bids and we are recommending to award this to Paul R. Peterson Construction, in the amount of $738,158. And so the equipment that you approved for Jacobs to purchase, that's gonna be roughly $225,000, $230,000, so you would add that cost on to the $738,000. So we're getting closer to a million dollar total for equipping this well. Just to put that in perspective, when we did the equipping of the Legendary well a couple of months ago, that one also came in at about $750,000 for the equipping that was complete. We're spending another approximately $230,000, $250,000 on this well, but the production capacity of this well is significantly higher than the Legendary well. So Legendary was 500 gallons a minute, this one's gonna come in somewhere around 1,500 gallons a minute, so three times, potentially three times the capacity, $250,000 more than what we equipped the Legendary well for. So with that, I'd answer any questions you might have.
Sir, this question I'm asking is of no significance to what happens, but I had someone ask me how you name your wells and if you're the responsible person for that and I told them I would ask you.
Well, sort of responsible. Actually, the wells in the North Well Field of which these are, the Legendary and the Little Pete, were actually, the names were set in stone about 15 years ago when somebody else was actually doing that capital project and we had six or seven sites that we purchased and they had already named all of the wells. So rather than confuse anybody, we didn't change any of the names for the new wells going in, we kept them the same as they.
Fair enough, thank you.
And if I can make a note on that.
I don't believe it.
Little Pete is Pete Jorgensen, who was the town engineer for years.
I believe that.
Legendary is Larry Prentis, your GIS director.
I think so too.
Okay, so that there is no confusion there. There's not that many Larrys in town.
So it wasn't self-named Legendary Tarkowski well?
No, no, this is Legendary Prentis, our GIS guy.
I've thought it's been you all along. Oh, I don't know.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. Especially if they get a well named after me. Here we go. Motion to Approve Award of the Construction Contract to the Lowest Responsive Bidder, Paul R. Peterson Construction, sorry, I gotta remember to get right in here, Inc., in the amount of $738,158 for the Little Pete well, equipping project, CIP and WAC by electronic vote.
I'd like to make a second.
Deputy Town Clerk, please call the vote.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you ma'am, thank you sir. All right, we're already on item nine. Comments from the public, consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Now I open it up? Anyone else? Sir, you're up. First one up, first hand up.
Hi, my name's Al Solinsky, I'm representing the Prescott Country Club, Property Owners, Board of Directors. This is Jennifer Lynch, she's our Board Secretary, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Laura, Marty, and the rest of all y'all. Anyway, we had some issues with item eight and that was the annexation of the properties. Anyway, we had some concerns from the residents and I have to say that we missed the public hearing on the annexation. I was in Warren, Vermont, Sugar Bush with the kids and grandkids skiing. I'm sure Mr. Mayor, you know where that is. So I apologize for that and I'd just like to say as neighbors, you know, the country club was established in 1971 and that's what, like seven years before Prescott Valley Incorporated? So we were one of the first in the community and we're neighbors and we want to keep it on, you know, a good accord with Prescott Valley. We wish we could've got a heads up, you know, we know you posted the signings out, everything in accordance with the state law, but you know, just to notify the Property Owners Association that's been, you know, established since '71, that we look at that as a courtesy to neighbors. Anyway, just a heads up is that we know most of the concerns that have been raised by the residents of the Prescott Country Club probably pertain to the zoning meeting and we'll be talking at that meeting, whenever that is, in April or May, but we just wanted to give you a heads up that, you know, there's concerns about traffic, there's concerns about is it the best fit for the community, there's concerns about impact to property values and there's some debate on that, you know, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, you know, there's adjacent properties, there's concern about noise, safety of the children, being that it is in the county, there's no sidewalks, so all those things I guess we'll be bringing up at the zoning meeting, but we just wanted to make you aware of that. Any questions?
No sir, no questions.
I wanted to just say, I was a former daycare provider licensed in the state of Michigan. Oh, I'm sorry. I know, I'm not telling them. I'm a former licensed daycare provider out of the state of Michigan for 10 years. I ran a daycare, so I am pretty open-minded about this project as a whole and it's not something that I'm opposed of and I understand the concerns of our neighbors. The only issue that I would bring up is that as of right now, there is a four-foot chain link fence around the facility for the children. As residents, part of what we would ask for is a six-foot tall block fence and I don't think that this is something out of, you know, spite or anything. For me, as a parent and as a former daycare provider, this is a public place in a very open spot, so I would feel, I would want the children to be more protected and private. So our biggest concern right now is that that For me, as a parent and as a former daycare provider, this is a public place in a very open spot, so I would feel, I would want the children to be more protected and private. So our biggest concern right now is that that would be recognized as one of the maybe points of, you know, hopefully compromise in this whole situation, and maybe make it easier for the neighbors to accept the things that they cannot, so.
Sure. Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
I should let you know that I chair the Northern Arizona Head Start Programs. We have five of them right here in Prescott Valley. We would never put them in what would be considered a confined-prison atmosphere of a block wall that those children couldn't get a flow of air through, couldn't see through. So I just want to make you aware of that. There's already precedent longstanding for there not to be block walls. I do agree with you about the height. I totally agree with you about that. So I just wanted you to have a little piece of established information for the four counties of Northern Arizona about childcare fencing.
Well, I'd just like to add that in the Prescott Country Club, the Property Owners Association, we have an architectural committee, and we have CCNRs, and as far as I know, the architectural committee's word is the last word, and they've already put TDAH on notice that a six-foot block wall would be required around the playground for sound mitigation and also to protect the children.
Thank you, sir.
I stand by my comments.
Thank you.
Ma'am, you've been waiting patiently up there.
Hi, thank you. I too have comments about the daycare in Prescott Country Club.
State your name for the record.
Sheila Rhodes.
There you go.
I'm a resident of the Prescott Country Club. I'm totally against it. For one thing, there's alcohol served, sold and served within the vicinity with the clubhouse, Maverick, and the Mexican restaurant there on 69, has straight access to there. The traffic is horrific already with Maverick. There's accidents there. A lady was killed several years ago. No sidewalks, no lighting. It's predominantly retired people. There are some people with children there. I think maybe a better fit would be Quillwood. It is not a fit for Prescott Country Club. We are opposed, and I also have a letter from a neighbor. We're against it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Charles Chemberg. I live in the country club as well. My only comment is if it's gonna be approved, and they're gonna go forward with building this where it's at, they should be required to put in a sidewalk on their side of Old Chisholm, probably from the corner from Prescott Country Club Boulevard, all the way back up to Turquoise. Right along in there is where the lady was walking, like, 6 o'clock in the morning, got ran over. She was on the, you know, and there's a lot of old people walking their dogs. You gotta give them room. They're in the streets. There's nowhere else to walk there. So a walking path or a sidewalk or something, I would suggest, if it gets gonna be approved, make them put that in there, just for safety of the neighbors.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, you bet.
Anyone else? All right. Gonna move on to item number 10, Adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Deputy Town Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.